All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will call this meeting to order. Counselor Shannard, I seen for a moment there and he's disappeared on us, but we'll get started anyway. Oh, there you are, Counselor Shannard. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of council be adopted as amended? Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing out all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, for the minutes of the January 19th, 2021, regular meeting of council be adopted as amended? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing out all those in favor. Motion carried. We have no public hearings, no delegations. Can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to bylaw number 2251, being the Edson West area structure plan, and set a public hearing for March 2nd, 2021, at the regularly scheduled council meeting for the town of Edson. Counselor Byer will make that motion, and we do have Mr. Hamm here, our general manager of Infrastructure and Protective Services, if you just want us, want to walk through what will be occurring.
I'm gonna pass that over to Ms. Chan.
Um, good evening, council. So the report is attached, it's given to you guys. And the, so we did went through the details on what is actually happening and on the changes of the air structure plan, and that was actually last week at the committee of the whole meeting. And now we're basically open for any question that council may have for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson, and then Counselor Shannard.
Yeah, through the chair for that open house that we're having. How are we arranging that people can zoom in with us?
Okay, so Ms. Chan, if you want to explain how the public hearing will work?
I can take it through the chair, Counselor Wilkinson. We will be providing the opportunity for letters as well as access to the Zoom meeting for the public hearing. If by any chance that we are, restrictions have been lifted through COVID, then we will be doing it in person at, in, in council chambers, but that is seemingly unlikely in the next four weeks.
Okay, one follow-up, Counselor Wilkinson.
How will this be advertised? Which way that they can reach us, reach into our meeting?
Thank you, through the chair. We will have it through the newspaper, on the website, and through social media platforms advertised. And there will be a link through the website as well as an email address provided.
We're not emailing the residents?
Counselor Wilkinson?
Sorry.
Uh, sorry, you didn't have the floor. Counselor Shannard.
Yes, since there's only like about 10 people involved, have we had a chance to let them know this was coming to council? And in case they had concerns, or have we had any concerns from any of the individuals?
Go ahead, Mr. Hamm.
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Shannard. Yes, we will be contacting the landowners directly with letters and attaching that information as well, so they should be contacted directly by us starting tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Is it okay if I just do one follow-up on that?
Hang on, Counselor Shannard. Hang on, go ahead.
I'm just doing the one follow-up because we had one of the residents in the past was complaining he wasn't. So I'm just thinking courtesy, if whatever reason, would it be inconvenience to maybe some of them don't respond? Just give them a courtesy call and say, hey, are you aware of this? Would that be something possible?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Shannard. Yes, we could, we could arrange for a notification call just in case the letters don't reach them, or a follow-up method, and, and we'll have that for them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamm. And just a reminder, council, to raise your hand if you want to follow up, and I will call on you. I think Counselor Wilkinson, that answered your question?
It did, and thank you very much for doing that. There's so few people, it's really nice that we can notify them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Any other further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing out, I'll call the question, all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to bylaw number 2253, being the flashing green light bylaw? Counselor Shannard will make that motion, and we do have our fire chief here this evening, Mr. Robinson, if you want to speak to this.
I was, I'm gonna speak to it first, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Bittner.
This was brought to last week to the committee meeting. This is now bringing forward for first reading of this bylaw. We did change the wording in the bylaw, there was one item where we just made sure that we including all Edson Fire Department members, rather than just saying full-time and volunteer, because we do have a sort of a mixture of different people that work for the department. So I'll open up to questions now, and then Fire Chief Robinson can answer those, if there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? So through to Ms. Bittner, I would like to do all three readings tonight, if possible. I don't see there's any reason to delay unless you have any concerns with that.
Uh, through to the, to chair. I don't have any concerns, it's just we were, we were speaking earlier today about we still need to do a lot of the advertising and the communication to, to the public for this, this new initiative. To do the first reading now and then have the second and third readings in two weeks would give us time for that communication to happen before it's actually passed, but there's no reason why we couldn't pass it tonight and then do that. So it's really up to council how they would like to approach that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bittner, and I, I will be asking for second and third reading. I just don't think there's any reason to delay at this point. This is not a controversial item or anything that we need any public feedback on. So council, any other questions, comments, or concerns? No, all right, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, for second reading of bylaw number 2253? Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing out all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion for placement of third? Counselor Sorensen, that's non-abatable, all those in favor. Motion carried, and can I get a motion for third reading, please? Counselor Byer will make that motion, and I'll give Fire Chief Robinson a moment if he has anything he wants to say for final words on this issue. I know that he presented last week.
Thank you, through, through the chair to all of council, thank you very much. I, I think most of the questions were answered last week during the committee of the whole meeting. Again, if you have any, any questions or anything like that, one thing I didn't mention last week was we did consult with the local RCMP, and RCMP are very supportive of the initiative and are going to assist us in ensuring that, that it is relatively flawless moving forward. And like Sarah Bittner was saying, we will absolutely do public education and awareness campaigns to ensure the public is aware of what's going on.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing out all those in favor. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're gonna move on to reports from administration. Can I get a motion, please, that council allowed each full-time staff member five wellness days for their use in 2021 in accordance with the criteria outlined in administration's memorandum? And that part-time employees have their wellness days prorated in accordance with their standard hours of service. Counselor Curry will make that motion, and I will call on Mr. McComb to speak to this as we did have a survey that went out to employees. Go ahead, Mr. McComb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, last time we, we talked about this, as, as you said, we tasked us with surveying all town staff and presenting three options that, that council was collectively comfortable with. We did so, we, we got a fairly widespread response. Staff, by a large margin, ranked five wellness days as their, as, as their preferred thank you, so to speak. We had 62.7% ranking that as their first choice. Second choice among staff was doubling the fitness benefit, and 32% of them found that as their first choice, and then family access to Repsol was, was last. Undoubtedly, some uncertainty around when that can reopen may have played a part in, in that feedback. That being said, administration recommends that we go with the survey results and award staff five wellness days in 2021. These would be use it or lose it, and as stated, it would be prorated for staff who don't work full-time.
All right, thank you, Mr. McComb. Council, any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Shannard, and then Counselor Wilkinson.
Hi, through to Colin. So if I'm understanding this, refresh my memory, this is only for this year, and then it's gone, you either use them or lose them, so it's a one-time thank you, is that correct?
Go ahead, Mr. McComb. Counselor Shannard, yes, that is correct. This is intended as an expression of appreciation and therefore would factor in for this year only, and as you stated, it is use it or lose it. If any days went unused by the end of the year, they would just be gone. No payouts or anything like that.
All right, thank you, Counselor Wilkinson, go ahead.
Well, first off, I do appreciate all the staff, and I do think we need to do something. I will support it, but I do question it being on the out of scope staff, because they already have 30 days vacation, five volunteer days, and this is another five which will give them 40 days, that's eight weeks that they could not be on the job. And I think that has to give ramifications at the work site when you're away for eight weeks. Originally, I thought this was because we had settled out of scope staff, that this more or less was for the other QP staff, and it has changed. I, I still will support this, because I do feel staff need to be recognized.
All right, thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Curry, and then Counselor Sorensen.
Um, Colin, the only concern I have, and I don't want to put too many parameters on it, I know that that, you know, sometimes sticks away from the appreciation, the thank you. But I would have liked to have seen this not being allowed to be combined with holiday time. And the purpose for that is, is that could then, as five days, somebody could choose to take a huge chunk of time off, which to me then does have a huge impact on service, and I know that it is to be divvied out in, by, by the managers, or sorry, not divvied out, but by managers, you know, and, and scope and what's available. But just typically where I have seen wellness days like this, that's just been a regular parameter, is that it can't be included onto your holiday time, and the purpose is to kind of use them throughout and sporadically to kind of lessen any of your stress. So just that comment, I'm okay with it if it's not. I just think that takes away a lot of our problems about concerns, about capacity.
You want us to respond to that, Mr. McComb, or Ms. Bittner?
Um, yes, through the, through the chair to Counselor Curry, thank you. I, I share the, the principles that you're operating from there, and it is our intention that these days would only be able to be used one day at a time. So at, at the very most, what somebody could do is add one extra date to their vacation, which should not present too many, too many problems. It's, we have good managers who, who think through these things and will make sure that they're not just rubber stamping these as yeses, that we're thinking through them and, and approving them in accordance with, with our service levels and, and what we can deliver.
All right, and Counselor Curry, one follow-up?
Yes, please. Thank you, Colin, that's fantastic. My only follow-up to that would be, I would also not like to see any managers using that to not approve them. So just a little both on both sides. We definitely want them to be used, that was why they're given, so I just would not like to see any managers taking advantage of that clause to not allow staff to use them.
All right, thank you, Counselor Curry. Counselor Sorensen.
Yeah, through the chair to administration, I just wanted thank administration for the amendment they made that was specifying one day at a time, and that, that, that addresses a lot of my concerns from previous discussions. And I just want to thank staff for the contribution they did last year, and it helped out the community a lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Byer, go ahead.
Hi, through the chair to administration, I also appreciate the, the change in the wording with the one day at a time, and also to thank the staff for all the, the efforts that they took without being asked, with the reduced days of work that they had last year, and, and all the additional challenges that came along with the quick change in the budgets. I have no doubt that that was a lot of stress as well. And I know other places that I've worked, when these circumstances have happened, we were in, you know, when times got a little bit better, we were in a position to be rewarded, and it was definitely a morale booster at that time. So I hope that this can also serve as that for the staff as well. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Counselor Byer. Anybody else? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Just to wrap this conversation up, thank you, Mr. McComb, for putting that survey out. I thought that was a really great suggestion by Counselor Bevan, and really thank the staff, as was mentioned earlier, for their contributions last year. It wasn't just reduced work hours, it was, which impacted all their salaries and wages, but benefits and all sorts of different things that we had to cut from our budget last year, which really has put us in a good position to deal with things this year. We're not through this yet, and we will be relying on our staff to help us get through that throughout this year. But everybody did so with great professionalism, and I know a lot of, well, a lot of folks and managers were on, working on their days off as well last year, just to serve this community, so thank you. All with that, I'll call the question, all those in favor. All those opposed, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration to draft and send a letter of support to the town of Drayton Valley for the joint application for the Alberta Community Partnership Grant? Counselor Bevan will make that motion, and Ms. Bittner or CAO, would you like to give us the rundown on this one?
I'll say a few words. The, the memo in front of you has a lot of the, the rationale behind the, the grant application. Drayton Valley is the one leading this. There was some discussion last year, I believe, between the CIOs of, of the day back then, on, on this intermunicipal collaboration of looking for increased capacity for all the municipalities, for some of the more skilled positions that we may have. For example, right now with our planning department, we have some maternity leaves on, so we're actually calling Drayton Valley to get some of their help from their planning department. So there's a, a lot of those, those sorts of, of skill levels that we could share, rather than trying to, all five of us try to get, you know, a, a certain type of person for each of those jobs for each of our municipalities. So this is just an initiative that's come up with, and there was a grant available for community partnership, and Drayton Valley has taken the lead on this for us. So this is just our letter of support for their application.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bittner. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on this? Counselor Wilkinson, and then Counselor Byer.
Through the chair, I love the idea, I think it's really something we need to support. I was just wondering why Edson wasn't included in the first group, where I see it was White Coat, Rocky Mountain Health, Drayton, etc.
All right, thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Go ahead, Ms. Bittner.
Um, I'm not really sure, that may just been an oversight on the, in, in the memo, I'm not really sure on that. I would have to look into that a little bit further, but we are definitely mentioned on the application that has gone.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks. No, I just wondered. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Byer.
Thanks, through the chair to administration. I'm pleased to see some collaboration between our communities happen on the CAO level as well. I did have a question. It's mentioned at the bottom of the memo to, the grant is for $200,000 to get this regional initiative, initiative off the ground. What does that $200,000 cover in this?
Uh, there is, sorry, through, through the chair to Counselor Byer. There would be an administration part of this, there'd be someone who would administer, administer all of the different collaborations that are happening between the different areas. I'd have to get more detail from Drayton Valley for the exact, what exactly makes up the $200,000, but I can definitely get that information for you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Shannard.
Through the chair to Sarah. So it's 200,000, so is this go to Drayton Valley? Or is it equally shared between all the partners, or is this for, we're giving support for Drayton Valley to do this?
Through the chair, Counselor Shannard. I, this would go to Drayton Valley, they're the ones administering it and running the program for us, they would then get the administrative people involved to help us with that, so they would be the one facilitating this collaboration between all five of them, so they would receive that funding.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Curry.
Just to CEO, through the chair to CEO, CEO Bittner. With this, is there any chance that we can see the grant application?
Through the chair to Counselor Curry, I'm sure I can arrange for that. I'll pop that in my notes as well, and see if I can get that out to you as well.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, everybody, for your questions and comments. I'm excited about this. Any opportunities to collaborate regionally is fantastic, and the group of municipalities that you see listed there have been working for the last number of years together on various initiatives. And we've helped hint and out on some things, and Drayton Valley is currently helping us out with some development stuff. And we are communicating all the time and working together behind the scenes, so I'm really excited to see us working towards this, and all those municipalities you see listed there as well, joined in on Edson's initiative for EV charging stations for Northwest Alberta. So just another great way to collaborate, reduce costs on all, for all of our taxpayers and build capacity, so I'm super excited. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration to send the attached letter addressed to Minister of Health, Honorable Tyler Shandro, regarding the former Edson healthcare facility? Counselor Byer will make that motion. CEO Bittner, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I'll speak to it briefly. Remember last week at committee, we brought forward that the representative of Alberta Health Services had approached us for sort of the, the next steps with the old Edson Hospital. After looking into it and finding that, you know, the operating costs are over 200,000 a year, and future demolition costs would be probably more than three and a half million. As a municipality taking on that type of liability is, is, is quite, it'd be quite a, a thing to do. So last week, council directed us to send the letter to the, to the minister saying that we wouldn't really want to be taking on this building. So that's the letter that's attached.
Thank you, CEO Bittner. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, well, Counselor Shannard.
All I'd like to say is I totally agree with this meeting. I like what we have in there, that the building has to be demolished, and like we discussed in committee the whole, it shouldn't be a burden on us. It's up to the Alberta government, their building, knock it down.
Thank you, Counselor Byer.
Thanks, through the chair to Ms. Bittner. I was just wondering, since our last discussion, if, I, I believe that there was some maybe thoughts that there was already a previous arrangement that they had mentioned years ago, that they might be able to support the demolition cost, and do you know, do we know if there's any like written documentation to back that kind of a, a promise up?
Through the chair to Counselor Byer, I may, I may have Ms. Parsons comment on that. I think she was the one that, that looked into that for me.
Go ahead, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you, through the chair to council. We did try and look into that, pull some records, and we just weren't able to track down anything that spoke to that. If there was, it would be from the 70s, maybe, but other, yeah, we weren't able to track down anything recent or in a development agreement.
All right, thank you. Ms. Parsons, Counselor Shannard.
Just to comment, even though we can't track it down, but wouldn't it be a common practice, they own the building, therefore they're responsible to either keep it up or knock it down? So I don't know if there'd be any formal go back 70s or who knows when, but I guess we can point out to their building, same as other, any other building in town, keep it up or knock it down through bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Shannard, and you're absolutely correct, that it's their building, so obviously they would be responsible for that, and should, they should be treated just like any other building owner in terms of its condition, and I will certainly be keeping an eye on its condition. I think one of our concerns as well is there is always a possibility, people gaining access to the building, and who's going to be monitoring that and ensuring that that isn't a situation that occurs in a residential neighborhood, so I'm fully in support of this letter, and as we talked about in committee as well, the provincial government has many of these buildings across the province sitting vacant, and they need to look after them. And certainly we will looking at a AUMA resolution if there isn't one already on this issue to ensure that we are lobbying the government to take care of these buildings. If there's no other further questions, comments, or concerns, I will call the question. All those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council accept the 2020 capital projects update as information? Counselor Bevan will make that motion, and I assume CEO Bittner, that she'll be passing this on to Mr. Hamm and Mr. Fisher?
I, I certainly will be. I just wanted to mention that when the quarterly report was brought to you a couple of weeks ago, it was mentioned in there that the capital report would be forthcoming. This is that report. So I'll now hand this over to Mr. Hamm.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hamm.
I just want to take the formal opportunity to introduce Mr. Pat Fisher, who is our new capital projects manager, and our, is a PNV and with a PNV designation, sorry, and I'm just gonna let him wing it from here, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Perfect, thank you for the introduction, Mitch, and thank you for having me. I'm gonna share the, the screen. I don't know if you guys have gone through it, typically you would. But basically, when we sat down at the end of the year, we had a bunch of projects that we're kind of sitting in, in different statuses, and we wanted to give you a little bit better information going into 2021, because some of them carry over, and just giving you a, an update on where the projects were at. So this is the infrastructure projects list for 2020, doesn't include anything in the 2021 budget. At the end of the year, we had the, the road rehab project, so primarily that would have been West Haven Drive that was worked on, and some, some miscellaneous patches in town. That project was done at the end of the year, minus some deficiencies that'll have to be done in the spring. The deficiency amounts are held in a separate account, so this project is basically closed, as far as I know, so there's a surplus in budget. The contractor we had on that project and the consultant worked really well together, and, and we were really happy with sort of how that turned out. The road assessment survey, we've got preliminary results, the, with, from the consultant. Basically, all of the roads in town were scanned in 2020 by StanTech, and they've, they've given us this really cool tool to, to let us model the quality of our roads in town. Hoping that they're, they're currently aligning some things with our AMP, our asset management plan, and updating some of the information in the report, based on feedback from myself. Hoping that in March, we can bring that preliminary report to council and, and, and show. But the information looks really good, generally echoes some stuff that we've heard from other consultants, that the roads are in good condition. First have designs, we've got from 48th Street to, I think it's 56th Street, being upgraded. Deep utilities and road surface, that's in progress for design. They were waiting on some information, and we had some challenges last year getting that, some stuff verified, so they're continuing on it this spring. And hoping that we complete that this year for the design. The snow dump, basically, we've substantially completed the construction of the actual dump itself for $650,000. The remaining budget, we're recommending to carry over into 2021 to deal with some operation requests, lighting, power locks, cameras and security items like that, so we're hoping that that is done sort of by August. The ground monitor, groundwater monitoring for the wastewater treatment plant is in progress. We installed all of the the monitoring wells, we're waiting for the finalized reporting to, to come, so that budget is still outstanding, we're recommending carrying it over. I think depending on the results of that report and the testing, we're, we're probably gonna be well under our, our budget amount. But it's hard to say when it goes in front of Alberta Environment, if they want us to do some more investigation or anything. The performance assessment, we had some challenges getting that one going last year, and due to regulatory timelines, it'll probably carry over into 2022. That is out for RFP this week for consulting services, and it could take up to a year to complete the study, depending And it could take up to a year to complete the study depending on what they need. Manhole sensors was complete at the end of the year. We purchased four sensors for manholes for monitoring flow and level surcharging in the sewer system. There with operations, three of them are installed, one of them's being installed currently. Stormwater management, this was the design work for Was Creek. Recommend carrying it over into 2021 to continue on with that project, which is also being amended with a grant fund in 2021. Forty seventh Street Kinsman upgrade, this is carryover from 2019. That project is done and finalized. Vision Park, well and washroom, construction didn't start in 2020. We had some regulatory things that we were working through with the water licenses. So I believe that that's ready to go or will be very shortly here. So we're actually starting to get pricing and tenders. Costs incurred to date include the design. The lagoon receiving station, I'm redefining the scope of that one a little bit. And I'm hoping to, it contains some operator asks and some regulatory requirements. And we haven't really done any design on it. So hoping to clarify that in 2021 and move that forward for us. The new landfill cell, design is done and we've gotten our approval. We didn't spend it in 2020 waiting for Alberta Environment and Parks to get us our operating approval. So that's going out for tender right away here. South landfill is done and the de-gas upgrade design. Still waiting for the design drawings to be done and then it goes for regulatory review with Alberta Environment and Parks. So recommend carrying that over into 2021. Just the highlights, if you, any questions? You're on mute.
Myself. There we go. Thank you, Mr Fisher. If you can just close that screen so I can just see everybody. Perfect. Thank you so much. Council, any questions? Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, I just have a question. When we talk First Avenue there, I understand where you're going. Do we have any plans in doing First Avenue out by G Y P S D in Yellowhead County? That stretch of First Avenue, which is a badly needed repair?
Through to CEO Bitner and Mr Ham. I believe there was a review undergoing possible local improvements in that area to pay for that.
Thank you, Mayor. And through the chair to councillor Wilkinson, it's it's definitely on our list of things to do. The local improvement aspect that we were engaged with in 2019 is it applies some principles that I'm not sure that fit with our current model. So we're, we're working, we're working with the landowners in that area to come up with a solution for that roadway. There were some other project add-ons that we wanted to add to that project. But for the most part, the roadway itself is the majority of the project scope. So we are coming up with a game plan for that space.
It sure is in bad shape.
Go ahead councillor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to Mr Ham or Mr Fisher. Thank you for the presentation. My question was also on the stormwater management regarding the first Ave at the bottom of Main Street there by the tracks. I know since I've been on council, we've been kind of talking about that a lot and that we've needed to do a study to figure out what to do. And I'm just kind of wondering where we are in that timeframe and when some action might be able to happen with our current scenario. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr Ham.
I'm going to happily defer this to Mr Fisher.
Thanks. Through the mayor to councillor Bear. I believe in 2020, MPE was engaged by the town to do the study in that area to reduce flooding. We use that study to, for community resiliency grant. The $1.9 million last year that the Alberta government gave to the town for flood resiliency. We're looking to use that money to implement some of the solutions brought forward in the hydraulic report from MPE. It looks like it's some widening of the existing channel that's recommended and installing some new culverts and some new drainage underneath the Highway 16. We are in the process of working on detailed design information and checking into regulatory requirements for that right now with the consultant.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Councillor Sorensen.
Yeah, through the chair to administration, I just wanted to comment on my appreciation for Mr Ham and his group. It is a rough year. I know it's hard to complete jobs during a pandemic, but you completed some significant projects well under budget and it's been a while since we've seen that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you councillor Sorensen. Any other comments, questions or concerns? Councillor Sharnard, I seen you had your hand up earlier. Go ahead.
Yes, I was just commenting actually councillor Byer and Wilkinson on First Avenue. Where we brought up the flooding on First Avenue, 48th Street, I think it's more of a pavement problem than flooding. I do under, underground is there, but I'm just, you ladies both asked my question, so I'm good to go for both First Avenues.
All right, thank you councillor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to, I think this one is to Ms Bitner. So on the surpluses that are listed in the chart, just pulling it up here. How does that fit in with our budget? Does that fit into our 2020 surplus at the end of the year? Or does that stay in capital planning? What happens to that money? Like the road rehab, that 281,000, I'm kind of curious where that ends up after this.
No, we just stay into the capital reserve, would you not, Ms Bitner?
Yes, depending if it's capital reserve or grant money, it would then just flow back into being available either through grants or through the reserve. So it doesn't really go into our surplus or anything. It just remains in the reserve for other projects.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions or concerns? So my only comment is I'm always happy to see us come in under budget, except I was a little disappointed that we didn't do more roadwork last year. But obviously West Haven was a late year project, so it was pretty hard to take something on at the end. We didn't know what the cost was. So I would hope that as we finalize our capital planning for 2022, that we rule that amount over into roadwork into 2021. As we did allocate a significant portion and a good portion of that was not used. Mr Ham, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mayor. I am so happy that you brought that up. We actually tried to thread the needle with that budget in 2020 and we were significantly under budget because that's how well the job went off. So our contingency was spot on.
Excellent. Well, great work there. And we have more funding to do work with this year. And I don't, the other question I had to do, had is in regards to roads as well. The road assessment survey, are we going to get a, is council going to get a review of that? Because I think we would all be interested to see what that survey says. Because what we may see above ground may not be the issues that are happening underground. You have any update on that? Because I certainly would like to have a more detailed idea of where we need to be focusing our attention.
We are very excited to bring you a presentation on the road assessment.
All right. Thank you, Mr Ham. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. And welcome to the team, Mr Fisher. Can I get a motion please? A council approved the proposed amendment to the memorandum of understanding side on April 5th, 2018 between Yellowhead County and the town of Edson regarding the Y C E Centre, the new multi-use facility. Councillor Byer will make that motion and Ms Bitner or Mr Ham, do you want to speak to this?
I can, I can take it for the beginning and Mr Ham can add if I forget anything important. It's just an amendment to our original MOU, just from sort of an administrative point of view. Just to have a little bit more oversight from both municipalities on any of the costs. So we will, we will take the lead as the accounting services. But there would be a committee that would review and sign off on all of the invoices before they are paid. And so it's just a, I think, a good way for both sides to be able to have their input into those costs before they go out.
All right, thank you, Ms Bitner. Any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carried. All right, council committee reports, we're going back to January 20th and we will start today with councillor Wilkinson.
January 26th, we had the FCSS advisory board meeting prior to our Cow meeting. And on the 27th, I went to the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management. And in Hinton, unfortunately there, some of their senior people aren't there anymore. So Bernie Kriner has been hired back to help them out. So he came and attended the meeting and he's doing an RFP for us to be able to move forward into having a manager type person to help us out with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you councillor Wilkinson. Councillor Byer.
Thanks. So on my report, on January 20th, I had an Edson library board meeting. On January 26th, the FCSS advisory committee meeting as well as the committee of the whole meeting following that. January 31st, I had a library committee meeting, a library building committee meeting. And on February 1st yesterday, I had a youth council meeting and they had two presenters at their meeting last night. They had, well, sorry, three, I suppose. They had Mitch Ham presenting on economic development and recovery and growth as well as Nancy from West Yellowhead Community Futures kind of joined in as well, which was really cool. And she got to speak to them about what West Yellowhead Community Futures is doing. And taught, even brought up Lemonade Day, the loan with the town of Edson and just kind of what they do and that their services are free. And that was, that was really great. And then we also had Staff Sergeant Delisle join the meeting as well and he was asking for the youth perspective. As right now the RCMP are doing consultation and planning for their next year, which is April to April, I believe. And he wanted to know if, what the youth thought, what they were maybe interested in being a part of that process. So I think they were a little caught off by surprise, but they've got some, some good ideas and some suggestions in there as well. And yeah, that wraps up my report.
Thank you councillor Sharnard.
Yes, mine's fairly simple. January 26th, the FCSS and the committee of the whole and my other boards are on hold until further notice due to COVID.
All right, thank you councillor Sharnard, councillor Sorensen.
All right, thank you. January 26th at the FCSS meeting and committee of the whole. And then the following day, January 27th, at West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority with councillor Wilkinson. And she already commented on that. And then February 1st yesterday had youth council meeting and councillor Byer already reported on that. So thank you.
All right, thank you councillor Sorensen. Councillor Bevan.
Yeah, just one was 26 FCSS and that was it.
All right, thank you. Councillor Curry.
All right, I'll help out councillor Sorensen. On January 26th, he also had the multi-complex steering committee meeting, which he could have presented on, but I'll take that. Huh?
That was before council.
No, I think.
No, that wasn't.
No, no, it was the 26th.
Right councillor Curry, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. You had your chance, you went first. We got to meet with our management crew, our project management crew. It was fantastic. They did a really fantastic job, kind of walked us through the process. It was really exciting. I don't know how the other two felt. But it just, yeah, made me excited and it felt like it was happening. It really felt like it was happening. So I was really excited and I'm feeling really confident with the group that we hired or that we got on. They seem really competent, really excited and have a lot of background. So that was really exciting. That same day I had the FCSS advisory board meeting and the Cow meeting. On January 28th, I had Community Futures West Yellowhead. Just a couple of updates there. I had sent it on to you guys, but just reminding everyone to let the business groups know that they are available for business coaching. They have business coaching in all of our communities in the region. They are getting a lot of feedback just with the stress that businesses are under right now. And just the reminder that they're not just there for financial aid. So there is that aspect. They can help them with the grants and all that. But they also do just provide general business coaching. And if it's not something that they can help them with, they have an amazing network. So businesses aren't sure if they're the right person to connect to. They can phone and they can usually lead them to the right place. So just reminding that if you're hearing any of our businesses that are really struggling to really give them a contact because they're great at what they do. And Nancy was here just recently, so she updated most, but we did get our first Edson loan, which is super exciting. But also the reminder that our loan was set up as a recovery loan. And we'd all love to be in recovery, but we're not there yet. So they're not really concerned about the fact that there's only been that one loan. We set it up for three years for a reason. So they're really anticipating there is still lots of loans available federally and provincially, those loans are still happening. So they're not surprised at those. It hasn't been as accessed. She also updated that we did, due to some extra funds, we do have our personal economic person that we supported. Heather will be with us till the end of the year. That's really fantastic. She's doing great work. Super excited about that. And then the other thing was just from, you know, a different standpoint. We are as a board just putting a letter through to their main funder, WD. They added all these new grants and they added extensions to the grants. But the operating funds that we're getting for it are very uniquely dispersed. It's based on a percentage of the grant, but then it's not till, right now it says we have to spend it by the end of March. But we won't know what that number is possibly till March 15th, March 20th. So just some concerns about the running of those grants will continue for years and having to maintain them and just some clarity on can this be carried over? Because the cost for Community Futures to continue to be the person that's supporting it isn't going to end March 31st. So that's just a concern. So we're just working together as a board to help advocate for that. On that day, I also had the historical society meeting. We are very proud to tell you guys that Brendan from our town came and presented on the environmental scan that they had done. And the museum is one of the most environmentally friendly museums we are, buildings that we have with the town. Still a few things to work on, but we're really excited to see that. So it was really interesting. He did a great job. So Mr Ham, maybe let him know. They were really impressed. Great job. I did share with you guys their revenue, just so you guys were aware of that graph. Their number one source of revenue is rentals. And as some of you may have seen in the reopening, museums and libraries are in the third phase. Not sure how that decision was made, not a high transmission zone, but they are. I don't know how that's going to work out for the museum. They are looking at doing, they had had their retail clothes. They are looking at doing some one-on-one so people can connect. They do have a staff member there every day. That was a safety purpose. I want the washrooms outside being open. So they are looking at people could book one-on-one to come in to do some retail shopping. They are also keeping the eyes open. The escape room is ready to go. It is COVID friendly. They were going to touch base with the health inspector prior to then, just to make sure that everything aligns. Their hope is as soon as there's any kind of lift, that they can do that because it's just, we know that the community needs some things to do. And so since it can be done in your cohorts and it's COVID friendly, they're hoping. Other than that, they have done a ton of training and a lot of the actual museum aspect that gets left behind when they're doing all the rentals and stuff. And as you can see, they're super active in social media and really getting a ton of engagement with the community. So that's great. And that is my update.
Thank you councillor Curry. And I didn't understand how museums are so much more dangerous than 1,000 people lined up on a ski hill. But I guess we'll have to wait and see. So thank you for that report. January 26th, I had the steering committee meeting and Mr Turnbull, who owns Turnbull construction management, actually was there as a part of this discussion. It was very exciting to see what'll be coming forward. We discussed using wood as one of the key features of building. They recently did a project in They recently did a project in in B C where wood was a major feature in a facility just like ours. And obviously it's a lot more cheaper and it's more environmentally friendly and being a forestry community. Excited to see that. You'll be hearing and seeing more about this project a lot in the in the weeks and months ahead. So very, very excited. We also talked about doing a design build as the most efficient way. And I should also note, hopefully not speaking out of turn here, but we've already had companies interested in bidding on this project, which tells us that there is a demand for these type of projects. Companies are looking for this kind of work. They may not be as busy as they were before, where we might be hard pressed to find people bidding on it. So with that, hopefully we will be in a good position and get a good price when it comes to construction. And they did review all of our plans and Turnbull Construction commended both the Town of Edson and Yellowhead County for all of our preliminary work on this. They felt we were really good positioned now to move this forward. A lot of times they walk into projects where a lot of this work has not been done. So they're very excited about that. We'll be getting into designing the building here and collaborating with some of the major user groups as that goes on here in the future. Also on the 26 had the F C S S meeting. I had a conference call with Premier Kenny and Hinshaw. And as we know, they have reopened some things. It was interesting to note that when they reopened in the spring after the first lockdown. Looking at the numbers as of last Tuesday, we had 10 times the hospitalization rates in the province of Alberta than they did in the spring. So when you're looking at those types of numbers, you can understand some of the points of view of why they have been a little bit lean restricted on reopening things. And they also mentioned the average age of hospitalization in the province is 60 years of age. Death is 83. As we know, we have had a few fatalities here at our long-term care center, continuing care in Edson and both of those. That's not sure about the one that was announced today was quite elderly. Not that that makes a difference in terms of losing a loved one, but certainly gives you perspective on where the issue is when it comes to hospitalizations. And our thoughts and our prayers are with them to all who have lost their lives to COVID-19. Also had the Committee of the Whole on January 20 and as was mentioned, youth council yesterday. And everybody seems to be coping fairly well. And I think one of our youth counselors had a great idea and I think we all should do this as a community is just make a phone call and reach out to people you know, just to make sure they're okay. Texting is not the same. This was what the youth council said. Texting is not the same as a phone call and a conversation. So that can make a world of difference, especially if you know of individuals that might be more isolated, living alone and that sort of thing. So that's my report. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thanks for telling us who the project manager is. I appreciate that, Kevin. When they're doing that design, if you remember when we had the public meetings, there was talk about switching the pool around, just like turning it on the design so it was more easily accessible. And I was just wondering too, if they're going to have it like a recant and classification for accessibility. I think that's so important. But the wood is great. I'm happy. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Counselor Wilkinson, because Turnbull Construction actually works directly with Rick, that foundation of recant and accessibility.
Oh, please.
And we had
anything without that now.
Yeah, so that was one of the major things because we brought up accessibility and they talked about that. So they're they're really engaged and that's something and they're also lead certified. So from an environmental standpoint as well. They'll be looking at those efficiencies. So I'm really excited about this. Counselor Sorensen or Curry, do you have any other things you want to add from that meeting? Because it was, it was actually quite exciting and I was pretty impressed with this this company in particular. Go ahead, Counselor Sorensen.
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to comment that they through the design build process, we're going to see multiple proposals and we'll be able to see different approaches to the same kind of concept. So we might see some totally innovative ideas that we've never seen in terms of layout and mechanical and all sorts of things. So I'm really excited to see multiple approaches to the same idea and then getting to pick and choose from the best of them. So thank you.
Counselor Curry?
I would just add to that. That was something really cool that I don't think we had expected with the design build and like there is a small aspect of doing a stipend for them, but you top four people can put in their designs. And there is a process where with through a stipend that you get to have rights to use anything in those designs. So you kind of pick your main design, but you actually get four for rights to four different designs, which was really cool. And they were just gave some really neat examples of ideas that people brought and how successful it was. So that was really cool.
All right, Counselor Wilkinson?
With Evergreens Foundation, we did a design build for that building in Hinton now. And really it's such a much better thing for the owner, but the poor people who put their bid in, like it was oh, at least $250,000 just to prepare the bid for the architect that didn't get the job. And the same with the builders. So they sort of lose out on that, but it seems to be the modern way to build now and really the only way to build is design built.
Yeah, and that's one of the great things is some of these companies, at least they're going to get a stipend in the end because then get some money back and then we get to use some of their ideas. So all right, we'll we'll leave it at that. No financial items, questions for media and public regarding items from this council meeting? Mr. Beth G, do we have the media having any questions?
Have Adrian on the line if she wants to ask anything?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, just one quick question with the way that the road construction went so well along West Haven. For future RFPs, is there a waiting that that company and that consultants would get a higher a more likely chance of getting the RFP? Can you wait it based on previous good work?
All right, thank you, Adrian, for that question. And I'm probably going to have to pass this on to Mr. Ham or CEO Bittner, who probably can better speak to that. But yeah, it was both the engineer and the the construction firm really did a great job. I live in the neighborhood and they were really great working with the residents as well with closures and that sort of thing. Mr. Ham?
That's a great question. We have a, we have a few options that that can regard projects in that in that manner, but we we wait our our proposal process in a certain way. So that there are ways that we can do that, but I mean, showing preferential treatment is definitely not not our best option.
Obviously, we also, we do look at the history and previous work as a part of that criteria during our own process anyway. So that way we avoid using companies we may have had problems with in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anything else, Adrian?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And did we have any questions from the public, Ms. Parsons?
We did not receive any pre-submitted questions.
All right, then I'll take a motion to move to our closed in camera session regarding CEO recruitment. Counselor Wilkinson. All those in favor? Motion carried and we'll go to our other link. Okay, so I think we have everybody here. Steve, are we good to go?
We're good to go.
All right, can I get a motion, please, for adjournments? Counselor Shannard will make that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.